I think we're about ready, so we'll start it off. And thank you, Mauricio, for being here. Mauricio Cabo, thank you for being here for the interview for Council Endorsements.
Yes.
And we're glad to have you here. You're with the CA editorial board. And we're gonna go through a series of questions, and I'll start with this one. Why are you running for this office? And what do you hope to accomplish if you're elected?
Hi, so I was sitting in my office at Latino Memphis one day, and I said like, I need to do something that is easy, that doesn't take a lot of time, that pays well, and makes everybody happy. And that's why I decided to run. No, I'm kidding. Of course not. It's really all the opposite, right? Be the change you want to see is the goal. And I think, you know, I've been in Memphis for 25 years. I have led Latino Memphis for the last 11. And I feel that it is true that the city has some level of momentum. I feel however, that we don't have enough momentum for enough Memphians. So this is a critical point to have leadership that will hopefully move Memphians forward together. We're at a time in our political spectrum and in our nation that everything is very divided, so we need to, you know, we need to come together to solve these issues. And what I feel that I bring to the table and I want to do is a combination of experience, because I've been doing community work for the last 11 years. Proximity, I'm an immigrant, I'm a Mexican-American. I have been close to the communities that I serve, one, because I'm part of the community, but also because of my job, and also experience in the sense that I have done that work, and a sense of urgency. I experienced the urgency firsthand, but I have also experienced the urgency of the people that I interact with every single day. And this is not only Latinos. On my role as Executive Director of Latino Memphis, I had the privilege of interacting with all kinds of people. And I feel the urgency, and I don't see that our city council has the sense of urgency. I think my opponent is a nice guy. We have a lot of nice people in the city. We need more than nice people. We need proven leadership. We need urgency. We need to get up and get this done, because there are just too many Memphians out there who are just not feeling this momentum and this boom in the economy and all of these things.
One quick question. It kind of goes back to your running for the office and your both community involvement as well as civic involvement, local involvement in the city. What do you see as the top three issues that you face in your district? And how would you approach those if elected? Particularly, I want you to focus on like the first 100 days if you were elected. What would you try and do the first 100 days?
Yeah, so thanks for asking. What I want to do, I don't want, if, when elected, I don't want to wait until I get inaugurated to start doing the work. I want those hundred, first 100 days to start immediately after the election. So when January 1st of the inauguration day comes in, we hit the ground running. I want to continue to work with as many partners as possible. So what I see as some of the priorities, the number one thing that I see is we need, we need to start coming together. So I think there's a saying that goes something along that, you know, knowing each other is beginning, you know, working, I mean, like trusting each other and then working together. There is no, I think we have to work in trust. I think people have checked out of the political process. I think many people are disconnected from our local and our national politics. So we need to start building trust. We need to tell people, we're here, we're listening to you. Nobody's gonna be able to solve any issue by himself or herself, no organization, no municipal government's gonna be able to do this. So whatever those issues are, whether it is economic development, transportation, safety, education, I mean, knocking on doors, we all have heard all of them. What we need to do is we need to have the mechanics in place where the city council doesn't expect to solve these issues by meeting together every other week and giving citizens the opportunity to make a pitch in two minutes before that wall sounds. I mean, that's just the hardest, that's the hardest one of all. I want to meet with people on both sides, and I have done that in my experience. I cannot just talk to my base. I cannot just talk to people who think progress in this issue. I've been dealing with issues of immigration for a long time, and we have been able to bring people, people from different perspectives together. So I want to do that. I want to do that, you know, again, on the topics of immigration, the topics of transportation, I'm so used to say that, of crime, education, and start having those conversations in those first 100 days with a number of stakeholders. So when I do, when I do get inaugurated, then we can start moving the ball forward.
So let's dive into one of those issues you mentioned, that's a politician crime.
Right.
We have talked to quite a few candidates in this room around endorsement interviewing, and crime comes up repeatedly as the number one issue, no matter where the person is from. How would you deal with the issue of violent crime, especially given that Memphis this year is on its pace to have 200, at least 200 homicides, which is far below the record number until 16, but it's still a very worsening high number for this city. And as you all know, it is a big issue in the minds of a lot of what would be your future constituents if you're elected. So how would you deal with that issue of violent crime?
There is no doubt that the issue of safety is in everybody's mind, and I will frame it a little differently. We do need to address crime, especially violent crime, in a responsive way. I heard my opponent talk about, you know, the cameras and adding police officers, and I think those things are good and they're fine, but oftentimes they're too late, right? I mean, I think we need to continue to approach the issue of safety in a more holistic way. From, yes, from addressing, from addressing crime as it happens, but also all the way from investing in education, from community, community policing, from what are we doing in our community centers, our economy. I mean, part of what is happening with this crime, and I'm not saying anything that nobody here doesn't know, is that people don't have good jobs, right? And that we don't have good jobs because we don't have a good education. And we need to bring more businesses into the city. And all of these things are interconnected. We can no longer just have soundbites and say, well, I'm just gonna add 300 more police officers, and that's just gonna, we're just gonna arrest our way out of this. Now, that being said, there are some very specific things we have to do. We have to continue to address the rape kids. We have to, you know, yes, get to the correct number of police officers, but we also have to be smarter on these issues. We don't need three fully vested, you know, uniform patrol officers responding to a crash, to a crash accident, to 40, well, we could have PSIs doing that kind of thing. You know, we need to address the issue of mental health. We, you know, so what I'm gonna do is, again, I will go back to the same thing over and over again. We need to sit down with people who are experts on this subject, who, one, are willing to come to the table in a very transparent and open way. We need to look at what other cities are doing, and none of these things are gonna be easy and they're not gonna happen overnight. But the soundbites and political, you know, slogans are not gonna save this crime issue. I am completely committed to do that. I have three kids, and they have the right to feel safe, and so everybody in that district should have the same, the same right.
Was there a moment for you that crystallized and you said, I want to run for this city council seat, and here's why? Was there some moment for you recent, or was it some time ago?
Yeah, so I think it's been for a long time. And I alluded to that at the beginning. I don't think it was a single moment. I think it is the ongoing frustration that I find the city council very much complacent with what is going on. But I'm not saying, I'm not even taking any credit away. I know this is a hard job, right? And I'm sure when elected, I'm gonna find that out. However, I don't see these men and women out in the community as much. I don't see them talking to people, to leaders of, I mean, it seems that the only time we talk to people is if people have an influence and they have a way to get to them, to the city council members, or when something is happening and they're like all yelling in front of you. You know, we just can't, I mean, if this was a business, we cannot operate that. We cannot just constantly operate in a sense of urgency. You know, I wish I had like a magic wand that would tell you like, we're just gonna do this, this, and that. These are complex social, economic, political issues. But what we need to do is we need to be committed, we need to be on table, we need to have experience. You look at my track record. I mean, do a Google search on how many news articles and interviews I have done. People need to become vocal. My opponent has not been vocal or has not championed a specific, a single issue. He has, he had his first-time home meeting probably 10 months into being in office. We can all do that. We need to be out there. So if you're not in the community, if you're not championing issues, I don't, and I don't care which one, I don't care on either side of this issue, if you're not out there with leadership and determination and commitment, well, these things are not gonna change. So you asked me if there was a specific moment, there are multiple moments. Actually, it's every day when you see that most Memphians are not doing well. My district and this city is more than downtown, midtown, and East Memphis. And those things are doing fine, and I love downtown. I sit on the Memphis Commission, on the Memphis Downtown Commission. I'm a big fan of downtown. But we just cannot, just cannot have one part of the city do fantastic, and then this little corridor, and let the rest of the city fall apart.
One other thing is that you talked about this a minute ago, was poverty.
Yeah.
And this city, and you know it quite well, has the nation's second-largest poverty rate among, among big cities and metro areas behind the walls. It also has the nation's largest poverty rate among children, nearly 40%. How would you begin to address generational poverty and begin to try and reverse some of those trends that clearly pop the city?
Yeah, well, and that's dear to my heart. I grew up in Mexico City, where you see a lot of wealth, where you also see many people in poverty, and you mentioned children. This is something that we don't, you know, in Memphis, you don't see children coming to your car and begging you for money. We see adults, and I think oftentimes, we think that the only people in poverty are the adults. So thank you for mentioning that. I mean, people oftentimes forget that so many of the children who go to Shelby County schools are not getting three meals a day, that they don't have heat or air conditioning in their homes. The two-gen approach is extremely important. We cannot only make interventions into the school systems and ignoring what is happening in the homes of these children, and vice versa. My experience in social work, my experience leading Latino Memphis has allowed me the opportunity to address some of these things, that, I mean, we need to have a specific program and specific partnerships with philanthropy, with nonprofits, with some government agencies. I mean, I will say that government is not really set up to take care of all these things. You know, we need to leverage these private-public partnerships that we can, that we can do to move the needle, move the needle on these issues. Memphis has, ironically, some of the most philanthropic organizations, and we have amazing organizations doing amazing work, and we're moving the needle in some aspects, but not enough. And oftentimes, I see, from where I sit, that it's really hard to work with Shelby County Schools, and it's really hard to work with the county, and it's really hard to work with the city. When I said that I wanna be investing in education, I'm not only saying that we need to put dollars into that. I wanna say, look, as somebody who represents 350,000 people, and once in the council you represent the entire city, I wanna be an advocate for our children and for you. This is the most important asset that we have in our community, and I'm not just saying that for bluffing. It is. I mean, this is, you started, the first question was about safety. That's exactly what it is. I mean, if we're not investing in these kids and in their parents, we're never gonna be able to break this cycle of poverty. And once we have three generations in poverty in front of us, and for many Memphians, this is the fourth generation in poverty in front of us, it's gonna be very, very difficult to do that. And people don't wanna pay for these things. We are paying the consequences of that by not offering fair wages, by not offering, by not investing enough in education, by just thinking that with cameras, we're gonna get our way out of this poverty. It is the most important thing.
My colleagues have questions as well.
Could you be more specific about addressing poverty? Say, it takes more than cameras, it takes more than police. Go into some ideas that you have about how this reversal of generational poverty could occur here. Because there are already nonprofits, there are already groups that are trying to lean against this and make things happen. What would you do differently, or what would you do more of?
I'm glad that you asked that, and most politicians want to stay away from any specifics. I, on my role as Executive Director of Latino Memphis, this is something that we deal with every single day, right? The issue of poverty, the issue of putting resources into something that sometimes moves the needle or doesn't move the needle. My biggest frustration is that I think we're moving the needle in individual cases. I mean, you see, when the Women's Foundation is investing in 38126, you know, and I was listening on NPR yesterday, the goal is to reduce the level of poverty 5%. You know, that, that in itself sounds like a very aspirational goal. Ted, what I want to do is sit down again from, with a different kind of power, with the power of the city council, to address these issues. I don't think anybody has been able to figure this out, and I'm not, I am not gonna claim that I will by myself. What I think is we have to do is we have to come together and put specifics, specific metrics and specific goals, and say, we're gonna address the issue of poverty in this specific city council in this way. And I tell you what, I mean, we have some very smart people in town. I'm gonna just jump off a little bit out of that question, but for example, transportation. We have a big issue of transportation here, yet we have perhaps the best logistical company in the world in our city. You know, are we talking to FedEx about transportation? Are we talking about our partners, about poverty? Now, these are not mechanics that you just gotta put inputs and you get outputs, outputs out, but you resolve issues. But what I want to do is, I want to address, I want to talk to the people who are on the trenches, specifically the nonprofit organizations that are trying to make a difference, and say, what are you, what can I do as a city councilman? What can I do to convene, to match, to push, to advocate, you know, what are other cities doing? And then maybe we can start finding solutions, because I'm not gonna sit here to say like, I have a roadmap for every single issue. What I do have is the commitment, the determination, and the energy, and the urgency to say, we need to address these issues now.
So you want the city council to find a, to establish a comprehensive program to look at poverty and how to push back at poverty. Do you think there is enough money in the city general fund to fund what is already being done, your police, fire parks, et cetera, and to take on generational poverty? Or do you think it may take other sources of revenue, perhaps a tax increase?
I don't think we need, we can fix, or even attempt to fix, these things with money alone. There's not enough money in the general fund to address this, but I think there is enough money and willingness in our city to address these issues. Somebody just needs to orchestrate it. The city council, and actually an activist made this suggestion to me, should have a poverty committee, just like we're addressing other sorts, other areas of government. And we should have an education committee as well, right? If these things are not a priority, they're never gonna start moving the needle. What we have done in education, we have washed our hands, and we have washed our hands out of poverty, because if we don't name it, if we don't call it for what it is, we're never gonna do it. I have three kids, and I cannot measure how much I love them or how much I care about them just by how much allowance or how much money I give them. What really measures our commitment to our kids is our actions. You know, like every single decision that we make in the house somehow impacts these three kids. So the same thing with our poverty, the same thing with our transportation. We need an important specifically. That is, that is something that we have to be specific, a bit very intentional about, and not only with general, with funds from the general fund. To answer your question, no, there's not enough money. But again, there's money from the, from foundations, from philanthropy, there's so much out there already being poor. I mean, we're important to the thing. We just need to orchestrate and have some specific goals that we can start achieving.
How would you play a role in the betterment of the Shelby County school system, or at the very least, the maintenance of what they do, as a council member who has no direct authority over the schools or the school superintendent? So how would you be involved with that? Or could you be involved?
Absolutely gonna get involved. And that is a similar question to Ted's question. Yes, we're putting money on pre-K. We need to find a way to get to true liberal universal pre-K for our kids. The role of the city is not to fund daily operations at Shelby County School. Our budget of $570 million cannot match the 1.2 billion-dollar budget of the city. Once again, as an advocate of Michael Stevens, I absolutely have authority to sit down. I mean, maybe it's not the explicit authority, or it's the implied authority, to sit with the school board, with the superintendent, and to find out, first of all, what are efficiencies that they could find? Where are things that we could do better? I mean, if we're, if we're giving money, but even if we're not giving a single penny, which again, I'm committed to find more money to do that, we are representing these people, these children on this issue. So again, I think what we have said, we're washing our hands out of this space, we are, we're telling them, you know, we have no authority over you, but we are gonna be in these conversations, and we're gonna sit down with people, and I keep saying that, that is important. I mean, unless we start listening to people, unless we start getting people around the table, just like we're doing here, we're never gonna start seeing change. There are specific things that we could also do. We need to, we could find ways to do capital improvements. It's embarrassing that some of the bathrooms in these schools don't function that. Some of the schools don't have proper air conditioning. It's, these portable trailers that are in some of our flagship schools, or some of our less, less well-performing schools, weren't supposed to be temporary solutions, and they've been there for way too long. So we could do capital improvements. I would argue that more Memphians move out of Memphis, and that we have a harder time inviting or attracting and retaining business people to come here, because our schools don't work, than because our tax increases or because these things. I mean, it's, you know, if we cannot, if we cannot convince future employers that this city can provide affordable education, a free education to their employees, or that it can provide a pool of potential workers, we're never gonna do that. So yes, absolutely, I have, I will have every single authority to talk to the school board about how they need to do better in the education space.
Take a step back to crime. When you look at the size of the police force.
Right.
You mentioned community policing. Are we at the right number? Do we need as many as some candidates are saying we should be have less? What was your take, if you just look at the entirety of the police force? What would you want to do with it?
I've heard the mayor, Director Rawlins, talk about the magic number they want to get. And I am gonna come in with experience that I have, but also with some fresh eyes and say, well, tell me, how do we get to that number, right? Is it 2,200, is it 2,500? Because I'm afraid that when we get to 25, we say we need 28, and at some point we need probably 3,000. We need to accurately do an assessment of how many police officers are, is the magic number per se. But once again, and if we are, if we're underutilizing or we're not properly utilizing those police officers, if these police officers are responding to nonviolent crimes, or to traffic accidents, or we're spinning our wheels in doing, in doing just things that don't make sense, we're, we're never gonna catch up, right? So I don't know what the exact number of police officers is, and we're gonna find out, right? We need to commission and study and find out what is, what is that right number, and how do we get to those, to that, to that number. What we need to do is, for the time being, we need to find out what are our police officers doing, and how can that be, how can that, how can that be better? I mean, it is, I have had experience where I called 911, and it takes 10 minutes for them to arrive. I mean, I have never had to call them for a truly emergency. But, you know, I don't know if that's because they don't have enough officers, or because they're responding to alarms that are, you know, somehow, that there's nobody there, or quite frankly, because we have, you know, I mean, whatever the case, we need to do a study of what is happening. And city council people cannot just buy, go buy a soundbite from the police director or the media on that. Maybe the crime number is 2,500, maybe so. Maybe we need to pay, maybe we need to pay police officers better, right? Maybe this, maybe we need to equip them better. I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm working in with a Y-Cam, I still hear about all the options, and just be solutions-oriented. And I don't know all these answers, but I will tell you that my colleagues, or my future colleagues, don't know either. And I feel that oftentimes they say, I'm just here voting on a block, I'm just here, you know, just because this is a part and gift that I have, and somebody told me I should be there. I might tell them, like, I am not being handpicked to that, I didn't inherit anything, I'm doing this for self-determination, because I want to do this. I'm not being manager, a big consultant managing a block of four or five people in the council. We need to get rid of that. We need to have transparency on this one.
So let's talk about that for a little bit. The role that you see yourself playing in the group.
Yeah.
What is that? Are you consensus builder, are you an antagonist? What is your role?
Yeah, no, no, right. I think you need to be a little bit of a disruptor, but you also need to be a consensus builder. And if you look at my track record, I have done that. It's, because otherwise you don't get anything done. My number one job is to get to seven votes as often as possible. But I don't want people to assume, because of my accent, or my ethnicity, or the district that I represent, that, 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 I don't wanna be a vote that is predictable every single time. What I want people to be, I wanna be predictable on, is that I am gonna study the issue, I'm gonna listen to different people, and I will be able to explain every single person in public on my website, how I got to that decision. So, no, I do want to be a disruptor, but I also wanna be a consensus builder. I wanna be disruptive on behalf of the constituents. But I understand that if you're just negative and just, just raise a hell, you're never gonna get anything done, right? And that's just not productive, and that's exactly what is happening in our, in our national politics. I wanna bring in people, to pull people together. And that may sound a little bit contradictory, but I am, am I gonna go with the flow? No, I want to lead. And leading sometimes requires listening, sometimes requires being at the front, sometimes requires being in the back, but you have to be intentional about these issues. Get to seven votes every single time that is possible.
Several of the candidates have mentioned, including some of the super district candidates, the desire to break it up, and they're the super districts. Where are you standing on that?
I'm in full support of that, even if that costs, even if that means that this is the only term that I will get to serve. It's extremely confusing. I have been in so many events that I've said, if anybody in the room, thank God you guys are not in that room, can name you, name your four city council members, I'll give you a free shirt, a free popsicle, a free something. Seriously, like 98% of people cannot. They, they, the first person is like, oh, I didn't know I have four, right? So it doesn't work, and it's really sad. I mean, like, how we got to that, right? It was, you know better than I do, it was historical lobbying, it was a judicial decision. You know, it doesn't work. I mean, the districts, like everything else, have been saying, I don't have a specific answer. What I will tell you is that we're, we need to get, we need to find that. I mean, it's harder as a private citizen to know all of these things, right? What I think is embarrassing is that our current officials don't know the answer to it. Coming next year, and I better have a specific answer to all of these things. But whether we have 13 single-member districts, whether we go back to super large districts, the goal here is representation and is equity in representation. As long as the city council is reflecting the population and the values of the city, we should be fine. I, I don't think we need to have a quarter percent. We just need to make this accessible. And our biggest barrier on this is the fact that 72% of Memphians don't vote, and that's clearly a disconnect. It's either people don't understand, don't care, and that's on the citizens' side. But we also have the fact that our city council has not been accessible enough to reach out to people and say, here I am. I mean, if I don't know my city council, remember? It might be 50% my fault, but it's 50% my city council's representative that has never reached out to me and made me where I am, and people are busy. People are never gonna come every Tuesday here to hear developers talk for two hours before, you know, somebody gets a two-minute card. I mean, this is not gonna happen. That's ridiculous. So we need to be, we need to do better. We need to be in campaign mode, just like we see the mayor and all of us, like knocking on doors and doing all of these things, three, four, or five months of time every four years? We need to be doing that regularly. And so, yeah, the answer to your question, yes, I'm fine with breaking out the districts, looking at what other cities are doing. Nashville has this humongous city council with 40 members or something like that, there are Metro, maybe that's it. Maybe it's 13 districts. You know, let's find what is working, what is not working. I tell you, what we have right now is probably not working.
My last question, and you mentioned it earlier, is tell us about what you've learned about yourself and about your super district and the city during this campaign.
A lot. This is a very humbling experience, because there are people who will cheer you up and support you financially, and give you a pat on the back and say, I'm so glad that you're running. There are people who just hang out on you, right? And that's fine, right? And that's, I'm sure that is gonna continue to happen after this. I learned about myself, this is kind of an area of improvement. I feel that because I'm passionate about policy and about these issues, I tend to get a little bit too much into the weeds. So most politicians will just come and give you the two, three talking points, but I get that people want to hear one or two things, but I refuse to accept the fact that that is gonna bring change. So I have learned, I'm learning to be more to the point. I feel in, when you're in campaign mode, you always have this feeling that you could be doing more, and you could, you need more time, and more of this, and I think that's, again, goes back to my sense of urgency and my desire to make change, change. And I hope in a way, and I really do, that I keep this fire and this sense of anxiety and this sense of desire to make change through the next four years. Because I think if we can all function in campaign mode for a long time, then we can make some change. And I'm saying this, and I'm so glad that it's on the record, because when elected, I want to be back here, not only once a year, but often, and say, well, you said you were gonna do that. You said that you were gonna bring people together. You said that you were gonna make change, and that you were gonna be in campaign mode. Are you, right? So hold us accountable. So hold us accountable. The media plays a very important role on this because it's the thing that keeps us on our toes.
All right. Any other questions at all before we? Mauricio, thank you very much for spending time with us.
Thank you so much.
And all the best in the race.